At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And again, we appreciate you being with us. The guidelines that we have, we'll talk about in a little bit in another issue. But just to make it a little bit clear, we have a clock now. A wall, five-minute clock. And the purpose of that is so that you would know when you come up to talk, and you're welcome to talk on any item on the agenda, that we're going to try to stick right with that five minutes. We've had some times in the past recently that things have gotten out of order. People have taken advantage of council and talking too long, coming up a second time when they weren't supposed to, those kind of things. And on the couple of times, they've had some yelling out. This is not normal. It's not every day. For the most part, everything is -- our council meetings go very smoothly. But council, we discussed this, we did determine that certainly we wanted to make it better for all the people. It's not fair when some people are dealing with that and doing those kinds of things, and others are not. They're behaving, so to speak. And so we want it to be a more pleasant experience when people come to council, as pleasant as it can be. And so we're going to stick to that. There'll be times now when we will go over, we have a presentation coming up early in our agenda, and that will probably certainly take more than five minutes, and that's fine. And if council talks to you or asks questions, that's another thing that we wanted here to the five minutes, because many times there are questions to be asked. So just to give you a preview, and we'll be discussing that in a little bit as well, and actually voting on it, on the guidelines that we have. At this time, we'll have an invocation and pledge to our flag.
I'll try to keep it under five minutes.
Okay.
Almighty God, who has given us this beautiful weather and good land for our heritage, we humbly ask that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of your favor and be willing to do your will. Bless our land and city with honorable industries, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the residents, that came here out of many lands and tongues. And now, with the spirit of wisdom, those to whom we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home. Fill them with the love of truth and righteousness, and make them ever mindful of their calling to serve the people of our city. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness; and in the days of trouble, do not allow our trust in you to fail. Finally, through obedience to your law, may we demonstrate your glory among the nations of the earth, all of which we ask humbly in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the council have any additional items, deletions, or adding to the agenda that we need tonight? If not, we'll continue.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to have a quick comment from council regarding the seniors/ youth center in Tool Hill and path forward in deciding a location and meeting together to decide where is a proper location for that facility. I don't know whether that needs to be an agenda item, but it's just a matter of just saying, when can council meet jointly to visit that site, to decide where the building will be built?
Is that on the -- not on the agenda, but is it?
We can talk about it later.
At the petition time.
We always have items, questions from issues and answers, and general-type questions. We've always done that.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, the only other thing, when we get down to talking about the Therisas and TD Bank and that, there's a couple other businesses I want to talk about at the same time. It'd be already an agenda item.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. Next item then is the minutes. Consideration of the minutes of the work session of February 16th, 2015, and the regular meeting of February 23rd, 2015. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I so move.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, going back to our discussion, which is on page 22 of the minutes, about the repurposing of the Hitchcock Woods money. I did call Mr. Holly, and maybe somebody else did too. From his standpoint, the money that we had here is -- was officially tied to this infrastructure bank loan. So when that went away, the city didn't have an obligation, at least from that part of the business, to apply that money to Hitchcock Parkway. If the city wants to do that, they can, as a volunteer and a donation to it. But we're not obligated to Arch or to SC DOT. I think we just need to be sure we be careful of volunteering our money for that. But we can give it to them if the council so desires.
Okay. Would you be very clear, what money are we talking about?
Talking about the $4 million. It's in item number 18, Capital Project 3.
Right.
And so we are not obligated to give that money to Archer or through SC DOT, because that was set aside for a specific purpose, to do the road, and it was tied into this structural infrastructure bank.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, that issue has gone away. So then it becomes money for another purpose, so to speak. And Mr. Smith had commented on that already the last time.
Okay. So you're saying it can't be used? Or are you saying it can't be used?
If council approves it to go to them, it can be used for that. I don't think we would want to donate to SC DOT when we're already paying our taxes to them, but I guess if the will of the council does that, it would be okay. But I would think we would want to use it on some other infrastructure work in the city, like we proposed.
Well, I think we discussed this at one of our work sessions, and my concern, and tell me if I'm off on this, was that by not using that money or keeping it for the Hitchcock Parkway, it might give the state the idea that, hey, we're not interested anymore at all in doing anything out there.
You know, that's a philosophy, but it would take council vote to give them any money, obviously, to do that. So that's a philosophy issue there. But I just want to be sure we're clear that we're not obligated to give that to them.
Okay.
That's the only thing that we got to be clear of. Thank you.
Very good. Sure. Anything else?
Yeah, I got a question on what you're saying. If, in fact, we start getting CPST money, where is that held? Does that get mixed in with the general fund for the time being, or is it totally separate, whether it's used or not, or rededicated, right?
We keep that in a separate account.
Yeah, it's a separate account. Matter of fact, it's two accounts.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Show of hands. Did I, excuse me, did I cover both of those?
Yes, you did.
Okay, I thought I did. Thank you. Under presentations. Presentation by the Aiken Regional Medical Centers thanking city for quick response after a water main break. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, sir. Aiken Regional Medical Facilities have asked to be here tonight. Bob Besley sent us a letter, as you have in the package, and so they wanted to come personally and thank us for assisting them when a large, large water main broke, and it could have been very difficult over there. So, Bob, I don't know if you want to come up, or if you want someone else?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. We just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to formally--
Excuse me, would you give the name so that we have--
You are?
Sure. My name is Rachel Ryan, and I am the chief executive officer at Aurora Pavilion, which is the behavioral health unit at Aiken Regional.
And I'm Justin Krueger. I'm the chief operating officer at Aiken Regional Medical Center.
So, back in January, we had a very large water main break that affected Aurora Pavilion, which is on the campus of Aiken Regional. And when Bob Besley called me, we were, to be honest, planning on an evacuation. We had about 50 behavioral health patients in the building that day, including children and seniors. So that's not a small undertaking to go about. It would have taken a lot of our resources, as well as police officers and transporting patients, you know, all over the state. So it was certainly something that we had a little bit of anxiety about. But luckily, thanks to George Grenton and Charles Baranco and their teams, they were there before I was even able to get there, honestly, and worked very quickly and very diligently to get the situation under control and had water turned back on for use very, very quickly.
And this was really a testament to these individuals and their respective staffs, and they've been so gracious in viewing us as a partner within the community, that they've gone so far as to participate in an exact same tabletop drill where we planned this exact scenario. So when this incident did occur, we couldn't have been more well-prepared. So our sincerest thanks to these gentlemen and their respective staffs, and this is just a small token of our appreciation for a work well, very well done.
That's wonderful. Thank you. We thank our team, too, that--
I would throw some credit to Bob Besley's way as well. He's obviously a good planner and doing an excellent job.
Remarkable job. Thank you very much.
Should we get, should we get, y'all got--
We do.
Should we get Chief up here and George to those plaques, maybe?
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're very proud of all of our team and the city. And all business, the first item is approval of guidelines for participation in city council meetings.
Many years ago, we developed a brochure for individuals that come to our council meetings, letting them know what the guidelines were and introducing them to a council meeting. As the mayor said, at the very outset of this meeting, we instituted a number of changes. Probably the most prominent one for individuals is the five-minute clock. But we do have a brochure that we wanted council to review and look at, and if you have no changes, we'd like to go ahead and ask that you go ahead and prove this, so we have it on record as to what we are trying to do in working with our citizens at council meetings.
Absolutely. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I'll move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Again, we're not, certainly not trying to keep people from talking. We just want it to go smoothly and have everybody have a chance, and so that we all treat each other as we want to be treated. And that goes for council, too.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. I know sometimes they make a presentation and sit down and come back to the mic again. Are we going to limit the number of times they can come back to the mic and make comments?
We need to.
We see it all the time.
Yeah, I would think it should be, you speak once unless you're called back up by, to clarify or, you know, a question from a council person.
I agree.
I would agree.
I agree.
I think so, too. Okay. Show of hands then, for approval. Okay. Passes unanimously. Item two is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees for various city commissions, boards, and committees. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, sir. We have 20 appointments that need to be made for the various vacancies that we currently have. We have three before you tonight, from council member Duvar. One is the reappointment of James Archibald to the Building Codes Appeal Commission. Another is Stephen Mueller to the Accommodation Tax Committee. And the third is Elizabeth Neal to the Senior Commission. So before you tonight are these three reappointments.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a--
So move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Just not show of hands, please. Passes unanimously. And how about nominees for our next council meeting?
I have, go ahead. I have three, Mr. Mayor. Reappointment of Catherine Thomas to the Arts Commission. Reappointment of Tina McCarthy to the Accommodation Tax Committee. Reappointment of Phil Hagerty to the Building Code Appeals Committee. That's it.
Okay. Very good.
I'd like to reappoint Rose Lee Fox to the Arts Commission.
Okay. Any others? Very good. Thank you. Item three, approval of funding for soil boring for Gem Lakes Road Extensions. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, sir. This city has been working for a number of years with the developers and citizens out of the Gem Lakes Extension subdivision. The area has had a number of failures in the road, and a number of patches have been made. In 2013, council engaged tool engineering to do a report on the roadway itself. The report stated that they felt some soil boring should be made along the roadway to determine the characteristics of the soil that the road was built on, and also to determine where the water table was within that roadway. We are now asking that council would go ahead and authorize us to do a request for proposal and to get these soil borings completed, so that the city could determine what steps forward need to be made for us to get that road in the proper condition, and hopefully get the city to accept that road at some future point in time. In 2013, when we were looking at this, the city had obtained one bid from Wilmer Engineering at $26,621, so that's approximately what the cost would be for doing this type of work. We might be able to get the costs a little bit higher, I mean, a little bit lower than what we have here. And you could do it one of two ways. You could go ahead and authorize the city to get the request for proposal, select a firm, and get the testing done. Or we could do the request for proposal, bring it back to city council, and get your approval before we go ahead and authorize the work to be done. But I would say you're talking somewhere in the mid-20s to do this work.
Do we have a motion and a second?
I approve of, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
A second.
Second. Okay. Discussion.
I just want to make some clarifications. I talked to Mr. Tool today to see if he ever had transmitted a plan for where to make the test borings, and that got stopped before he ever did. So I think, Roger, as part of that, we need to get the layout from Mr. Tool's company, where he was looking for those, and that they, so they're just not a random testing, had a specific layout. And I think as part of that, Mr. Tool said he would furnish that to the city if somebody will contact him. I didn't instruct him to do anything. The other part of that that I would request is that we don't use anybody to do these tests that's already tested, made tests on that road. We need, if you will, a third party.
Right.
So that would be the two things that we need to do. And then I'm assuming those, that data would be in the public domain also.
Absolutely.
Can you repeat that last statement you made? What about the public domain?
These tests would be in the public domain, so if some council person asked for them, they would be sent to them.
Some random-- I understand.
Or anyone else. That's right.
Or a citizen asked for them.
Right. Sure.
And I would just say that this action, as a result of our work session, we have dealt with this issue for far longer, again, than we should have. This test should have been done a long time ago. We've dilly-dallied around. We're now finally taking the final step of getting the data that we need to determine what we need to do to make those roads acceptable to city standards and acceptable to the residents. So I thank the council, and I thank the city manager for putting it on the agenda.
Can I just follow up on the motion that you made, council member? Was this for us just to get the quotes and then bring them back to council, or could we just go ahead and get the quotations and authorize the work?
I would want you to get the quotes and move on.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was hoping you would say. Thank you.
At 20,000.
I think it's at mid-20s. Is it, are you going to put a cap? Are you not going to have a cap on it?
Well, right now, until I get the work from Tool on where the boring's going to be made and the depth that he would like us to make these at--
I mean, I think--
You know, I don't think we're talking 30, 35,000 at the most. But I'd prefer to go ahead and give us authorization to move forward. We delayed long enough.
I agree that we should give you authorization to move forward, but it ought to be with a cap on the dollar value.
Okay.
I would say 25,000, 30,000.
I'd like to have at least 30.
30, I think, would be acceptable.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
That we already have.
We did that.
You have comments from the public? Whoop, Mr. Mayor?
Show of hand. I'm sorry.
You got a comment?
Yes, sir.
Not processed. We should--
For the record, my name's Rich Decker, and I am a resident of Gem Lakes. I think the decision to move forward with the testing, of course, is long overdue, as you've said. I mean, it's been six years. I have a couple of questions on this, though. Who, when you get these test reports back, they're going to specify that certain soil characteristics or water characteristics have been found underneath the road, correct?
Correct.
That will then have to be translated into an engineered solution. Mr. Tool, when he came here, was proposing that he was going to do the engineered solution, but he needed the testing to be able to figure out what was going on underneath the road and develop a remediation effort. So once these test results are in, who then is going to engineer the remediation efforts? Who is going to take charge of it? Who's, you know, before the citizens ask for an independent engineer to come in, assess the situation, do the testing, come up with a plan for remediation, and then we could proceed from that point? So, you know, just having test results, where does that get you?
Well, you're asking us where we going, where we're going when we don't know where we need to go.
No, not really. And what I'm saying is, is, okay, you have, you have in your hand a test report that says the soil is such and such a characteristic. Does that mean a lot to you? What you need is, you have a soil's characteristic, and then an engineer, a licensed engineer, who has an expertise in this, such as Tool, has looked at that and said, okay, based on that, here's what needs to be done.
Well, that's the next step.
Right. So do we have that person in mind, or is it, you know?
The city has already engaged tool engineering to do this, so I would imagine that you would continue with tool engineering.
That's what I would say to do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
You have to vote in on this thing.
We need to vote.
Show of hands, please, all in favor. Passes unanimously. Item four, second reading, public hearing, an ordinance to amend conditions of annexation of six acres on Town Creek Road. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, I'm going to read this by its title. It's an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 0712, 2004. The ordinance obviously was passed in 2004, 11 years ago, and at that time, they thought that they could put a road right across the street from an existing road, only to find out that that property was in a clouded state as to who actually owns it. And so they went to the planning commission and asked that this road be moved further to the east to accommodate where they know what portion of the land is owned by this individual. Council did approve this ordinance at first reading on February 23rd, and this is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend ordinance 0712, 2004, by deleting requirements that the one curb cut onto Town Creek Road be aligned with Seven Oaks Drive and allow the curb cut to be further down Town Creek Road.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I so move, Mr. Mayor, that we--
I second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Show of hands, please, all in favor. Passes unanimously. Item five, second, excuse me, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the 2014, 2015 budget to provide additional funding for the meter change-out program. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, sir. I'm going to read this by its title. It's an ordinance amending the budget of the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015. The city had asked us to go ahead and to accelerate the change-out of the meter program when I first came back last June. We have done that, and because of that, we have run out of, or running out of funds to purchase meters for the continuation of this program. Therefore, we are asking that we would increase this budget from $1 million by another $410,000 to purchase additional meters and backflow preventers. So for your consideration, this is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the 2014, 15 budget by an additional $410,000 to the water meter replacement budget. Funds would be taken from the water and sewer depreciation account.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second?
I so move.
Second.
Second. Done. Any discussion?
I just have a, sort of a related question. The number of meters that we're being done, we have our monthly utilities report that was in our packet. Is there any place there to turn on, turn off? Is that how many meters we have replaced this year?
No. The turn-on, turn-off is a, when somebody requests that the water obviously be turned on or off.
Okay.
That's what we are doing. Where is this listed? Is in yours, Kim, the number of meters, or do we not have it listed that we're replacing?
It's not listed.
I didn't think so.
I thought at one point we had agreed it would be in the utility report, a special section, and there is a special section for meters, but it's not new meters installed, so we can--
I'm sorry, I did not know you had asked for that.
Okay. That's--
But we are ahead of schedule, I can tell you that much.
And that's a good thing.
And you need more money.
That's a good thing. Anything else? Okay. Show of hands, please, all in favor. Passes unanimously. The new business, first item, request to revoke the business license at Marlborough Station. Mr. LeDuke, please.
City council got information from us, and you have some additional information from public safety that was given to you at your desk here concerning a number of incident reports at Marlborough Station. Due to the activities that have been ongoing for the last several years, and to, most recently, two shootings that occurred there on two separate occasions in the last four weeks, the public safety department, in conjunction with our business license official, decided that we needed to revoke the business license at Marlborough Station. that we needed to revoke the business license at Marlborough Station. The way that, this has only happened, to my knowledge, one other time that I can recall, and that was in the early 2000s, when again, another nightclub in town had to have its license revoked because of similar problems that we faced at that particular location on Richland Avenue. Our staff attorney, Paige, is gonna come up here, and she'll go ahead and walk you through the procedure that we need to go through tonight, and then council will hear from the owner or anybody else, and then you will have to vote whether or not on this revocation of the license.
And we do have some residents present tonight.
Okay.
That may wanna speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you, Mr. Leduke. On March 3, 2015, city staff suspended the business license for the Marlborough Station, located at 141 Marlborough Street pursuant to Section 1245 of the city code. Specifically, the license official is allowed to suspend a business license if a license has engaged, if a licensee has engaged in an unlawful activity or nuisance related to the business. Under such circumstances, the licensee shall be given written notice of the suspension and is entitled to a hearing before city council within thirty days for counsel to hear the reasons for the suspension of the license, and then to determine by a majority vote of those present whether it is appropriate to revoke the business license. Now, city staff has recommended the revocation of the business license of Marlborough Station based on the large number of calls the Aiken Department of Public Safety has made to the establishment over the past, you know, we're just specifically the past fourteen months. I have listed for your review a synopsis of thirty occasions in which a call has generated an incident report. This is by no means all the calls that have been made from or about the Marlborough Station during this time. Not every response requires an incident report. And Chief Bronco and Captain Sawyer and Captain Terno are here to speak specifically about incidents there and when an incident report is generated and when one is not. The most disturbing is in the past few weeks, there have been three incidents involving gunfire, two of which have resulted in gunshot victims. Unfortunately, because these shootings are under investigation and will most likely result in prosecution, I'm unable to provide any video surveillance for you at this time, because that will be evidence in some upcoming trials. However, Captain Terno and Sawyer are available to testify to the dangerous conditions inside the club and other illegal behavior by patrons, which would qualify as a public nuisance. Since January 2014, dispatch has received eighty-two calls for assistance from this location from unknown numbers, not from the club itself, but just unknown. A full, one-third of them involve violent disturbance of some nature, and over ninety percent of the calls are after midnight.
Paige, were these eighty-two calls in January, I mean, in 2014?
They started in January of 2014, and until, I think this, not this past weekend, because it was closed, but the weekend before.
Hey, John, I know you can't tell us, you know, what you're doing, but are these cases gonna be prosecuted under the safe cities or safe communities where we try to lower the boom as much as possible on the perpetrators?
I am not aware of whether or not the suspect, I know we have a suspect in one of the shootings. Whether or not he's on our list or not, that could be a question answered by Captain Sawyer, Captain Terno, or Chief Bronco. But I know that they are still looking for the second suspect.
The January answer that with the guns, that they were actually five shots fired inside the business?
That's correct, Councilwoman Diggs. It, the fight started inside, there was somebody inside with a gun, and fired two shots inside at the dance floor, and everybody ran out. And when they stampeded out, they were all caught at the door, which was another concern. Aiken Department of Public Safety had that even though the building met, you know, fire department requirements, there was still a safety issue as everyone tried to exit the building all at one time.
Have any idea how many people were there that particular night?
I'd say a hundred, but I'm getting a guess, one hundred.
You know, this report is bad enough by itself, but it goes back years and years and years. I've been around too long, I guess, to not say that, but there have been problems at this place for many, many years, not just what we see on this paper, and this is worse enough. Anyway, could we get, Chief, would you like to come up and make a comment? Terno? David?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to add that previously in 2009, the Marlborough Station, Mr. Pitts, the owner, was also put on notice about some nuisance issues from the, at the time, Lex Kirkland, who was the business license coordinator. And as I told Mr. Pitts before we came today, the focus is the shootings, of course. That's the most dangerous. I reviewed the minutes from the last revocation of a bar that came in front of council, and the council said at that time that they wanted to know sooner than later, so that's why we're bringing it forward to you. So, thank you. If you have any specific questions about the shootings that we can answer, I have the case agents here to be able to talk about those.
I got a quick question. The city solicitor referred to, there was a, like, not a stampede necessarily, but a blockage as people tried to exit the building. Now, I used to, we used to have a big contract up in Rhode Island, and that was that time when, I know they probably don't have power techniques, but they did have power techniques, and they had some of the exits actually chained from the outside to keep people from trying to sneak in and so forth. I was wondering, does the building pass muster as far as the fire code goes?
Well, that was not the case in this, the exits were not chained. But there are some existing non-compliances that really are only, and they've been forwarded to Mr. Pitts as well, that we can only mandate if there's a renovation to the building and/or a change in ownership at this time, so.
Chief, what is the age ages of the people that usually frequent this establishment?
I would defer to Mr. Pitts on that. However, he has told us that it is a, he considers it a private bar, but he does allow eighteen-year-olds into the bar. And of course, they're not allowed to have any, consume any alcohol, but, so it'd be eighteen and up on certain nights.
They aren't allowed to have any, to consume any alcohol?
They're, that's correct.
Who monitors that?
The bar does.
But can't other people buy them drinks and pass it to them?
Well, I'm sure that's a possibility, but the bar does manage that once they're inside their establishment.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Do you want to have any other comments?
We've got several people here that...
Yeah, would anyone like to speak? You may certainly do so.
Do we need to hear from, do we need to hear from the owner?
Yeah, Mr. Pitt, well, of course.
I'm Bruce Pitts. I'm the president of the Marlborough Station. We do let eighteen and up in, but we have bouncers. Like, on Saturday, we may have four bouncers controlling that, and they also have their own wristband. So they, no, we have to be real careful with that.
What is the age range of people that frequent your establishment?
Eighteen to about thirty.
And how do, do you have any way to control the crowd?
That's what we have the bouncers for.
Okay. Are they trained by bouncers, or just friends that stand at the door?
They're members. And we give them training. What bouncers normally are supposed to use as guidelines, we give them that in their 1099 contract that they sign.
Do you have security in and outside of the establishment?
Yes, we do.
It's, who, do you employ a private company or Public Safety, or?
Right now, we're looking at a private company. I was supposed to meet them after the meeting tonight.
So you hadn't had them in the past?
Not a private, but we've had members that have training. We give them guidelines to follow, like, we give headlocks or different types of ways to control somebody when there's a fight.
What's the largest number of people that you have in the club on any given night?
Well, the, the number on the wall that Aiken Public Safety has signed off on is two forty. We had that night of the shooting inside.
Did you say two hundred and forty?
Two forty. That's a five thousand square foot.
That's a lot of people to control.
It is, but then you have to have one bouncer for seventy people, so that's what we do.
Have you ever used Public Safety off-duty individuals for your security?
We've talked about it. Charles Branko and I have talked about it.
Who checks the IDs when they come in?
We have a door person. They check memberships and IDs.
Anybody check for weapons?
We have a metal detector now, and we have been frisking before we got the metal detector.
Did you have it the night of the shooting inside?
We were frisking the night of the shooting inside, and then...
And someone still got in with a gun?
No, they ran out, that was on video, because they caught that on, we have security cameras. And what happened that night is the fight broke out, the guy ran out to his car and ran back in with the pistol.
Where was your control there then?
Control?
Yeah, where was it?
As far as at the door?
Yeah.
They were helping out with the fight. There were different fights broken out on the dance floor.
So there were fights going on?
Yeah, they broke out, several fights broke out, and then one ran out to his car, got a gun, and ran back in. Our door guy was helping out with the fight on the dance floor.
What provoked the fights?
I don't know.
What do we have to do, wait until somebody is killed? Is that the deal? Before, you think that you don't have control?
I understand what you're saying, and we're very concerned about it, too. Did you all get this email I sent you last night?
We did.
Okay. What we're doing is, we haven't been closed on the, we have not been open on those nights. Every other Thursday, the first event happened on a Thursday night. We've closed Thursdays since then, except college nights. So every other Thursday, we have college night, and the other Thursdays, we close. The last incident was on a Saturday, and we have not been open on a Saturday since. We're trying to come up with a solution. What I wanna do is outline here is go with invitation-only parties, and you have to be invited to get in.
And you're coupling with that the idea of private security?
I wanna talk to them tonight.
Okay. But that's part of your idea, is to go with private parties, by invitation only, and have private security at the same time?
Well, it depends on the night. I think college night, we wanna have the security company. If we have our people we invite in there on, like, Saturdays, I don't think they're a real problem, because we have good bouncers as it is. Now, that won't rule out us trying that.
But do you think that the violence is specific to certain nights? I mean, can't somebody get mad and do something stupid on any given night?
Well, we're gonna invite the right kind of people, so that doesn't happen. And we, we've been doing this for years, bouncing and running the place, and we've been pretty good at it.
Mr. Pitts, why would you have to extend invitations if you have private members?
Well, we wanna get people in there that won't be fighting.
You say you have a membership, a membership list.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I just can't imagine having a membership and then not being able to identify the shooter. Or is the shooter identified, they're just looking for him?
Well, you have to know who the person is.
You know who the person is?
I didn't know who that one was, no.
Well, I mean, if you have a membership list, I mean, I think Public Safety would probably, you know, through meeting up with some people, specify that member, I mean, if you have a membership list.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question.
I mean, to get in the club, I assume you have to be a member?
Yes, you do, or a guest of a member.
Or a guest?
Of the member.
Or do you take a name of the guest, or is there a control?
Usually, we have them become a member that night.
Do they fill out an application, pay dues, or?
They do.
What exactly do you have to do to become a member?
You fill out a membership application, it's five dollars, to become a member.
There are a lot of serious incidences on this sheet.
And this is only part of it. If you go back, isn't that right, Bruce? I think you would probably agree. This is only a little bit of everything that's happened out there over the years.
Over the years, but we haven't had problems till lately, I'd say since 2013.
Well, I don't think we want those kind of problems, I don't.
I understand.
When people start shooting, I, we don't want anybody killed.
Absolutely.
They started with minor infractions, and now you're almost at the murder stage, and safety is our number-one concern. This is very troubling.
Do you know any of these folks sitting in the audience that live on the street?
I know a few of them over here.
Okay. They're senior citizens, and they travel that street home.
Okay.
I just wanted you to see who the neighbors are.
Okay.
And they've been there for a long time and take pride in their properties. I think most of, most of them are, or all of them are retired, and I'm sure they were looking forward to having peace in their lives. I don't know, I think that peace has been disrupted.
Mr. City Attorney, are we supposed to be acting as a jury in this case, so to speak?
I think we need to hear from the others, citywide.
Okay, well, we're all coming to some conclusions, but can we hear some more people that wanna speak? You're, clearly, you wanna stay in business. Why? Why should we, why should we grant you the privilege of staying in business, given this record?
We're not used to shootings there, so we've closed down on the nights we've had shootings, and we're trying to find a solution.
Okay. Let's hear from some of the citizens now. Did you have anything else you wanted to say, Bruce, first?
I just hope you give us a chance to go with invitation parties and security, private security companies, register with SLED, that type of thing. Place has been around since 1999.
Sorry, I'm backing up on you real quick, but I don't understand why the idea of closing down on a Saturday night, I mean, there won't be a shooting on a Friday night.
We haven't had problems on Friday nights. Not really some, but...
Is there something special about Fridays that makes you only angry?
It's not nearly as popular, it's a different crowd, it's, it's just a night we've had too many problems.
And your proposal to do the invitation parties, are you talking about only those Saturday nights and Thursdays?
Saturdays and Thursdays, yeah.
So you'd be open as, for business, the same way on Wednesdays and Fridays, or whatever other days you're open?
We're open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Okay, so, so you'd be open for business as usual on Friday night, just not on Thursday and Saturday?
Well, that's the way it is now.
Right.
But I'd like to move in, move into the private parties.
All right.
Would Mr. Pitts be able to apply, apply for his license, have it reversed at a later date?
I'm sorry, what now?
What, are you asking a question, or what?
Would he be able to reapply for his license at a later date?
Your, your business license administrator, Nathan Campbell, would have to answer the question, how long would it go? And I think once you hear from everybody, they could probably give you that summary as to when he could reapply for his business license and that sort of thing. Nathan, can you come answer that question?
Let me ask Mr. Pitts another question.
Let me ask Mr. Pitts another question.
Okay, that's fine. Nathan, can you come on up?
I think Paige said that most of the incidents happen after midnight. How late do you normally open? Have you thought about maybe closing earlier? Rather than closing entirely for a, for a given night, being open but not open as late? Because my parents always taught, told me that nothing good happens after midnight.
I know, but with young people, it's, it's just the best time of night, really. We're not like downtown, but we're a members, Members Club. Downtown are actually businesses. We're not. We're a members corporation. So I'm the president, and, but we have to...
But if your problem seems to happen after midnight, when maybe, maybe people have had that much more to drink, that it, you know, my first instinct would maybe not be open after midnight anymore. Have you, I mean, is that, that won't fit your business model? I mean, would that hurt you?
Sometimes people don't get there till around midnight.
Really?
It's more of a disco, disco tech environment. Dancing, dance floor. Typically, we're late type environments.
Okay, we need to get, have some of our citizens come up and talk.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Nathan, real quick, answer that question that...
There's nothing in the ordinance that states whether he can get another one or not. It would be up to the City Council to determine if they want to put a forever or if he may be a different location, something like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just give us your name and your address, if you would, please.
My name is Dexter Price, and I live on Marlboro Street. I've come for you all tonight on behalf of the concerned cities, the concerned citizens of the City of Aiken, all of whom live on Marlboro Street or within a half a mile of the Marlboro Station. I also have a letter on behalf of these citizens, just because as I walked out today and just got signatures for this petition, I noticed how, how overwhelming, how overwhelming it was, how many people didn't want it in that area, excuse me. I also have a letter that I wrote for City Council. Members of Aiken City Council, we live in the surrounding area of the Marlboro Station, and we are seeking your help to put an end to the lawless, dangerous, and chaotic situation that occurs every weekend night from the spill in and out of the Marlboro Station. This is an ongoing occurrence that has reached a point where the situation has imperiled the health and safety of our families and neighbors. It is impacting our quality of life. In January, there were two reported shootings in this venue. Last month, shots were heard on the street near the club, and on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, the crowded activity on the street has gotten much worse. Patrons have been seen and heard fighting, drinking, and breaking bottles all over the street. They are also urinating, leaving trash on the street, and screaming and yelling during the middle of the night and into the morning. It has become almost unbearable to live on Marlboro Street because of the club on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. The police have been trying their best to control the situation, but the recent crowd violence and lack of security may counter their efforts. Additionally, the club is taking up important resources from the ADPS, paid by taxpayers, to take time to have to deal with calls regarding the Marlboro Station. Since the club has been closed by the police, the neighborhood has been peaceful and calm. We hope that they will not be able to reopen, only to get right back to the bad situation that started this process. We are urgently seeking your help to close down or fix this situation for good. And we thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Thelma Johnson, and I have lived on Marlboro Street over 50 years. And we have never had any problem on that street. We may have had minor problems, but no major problems like this. We are concerned about our safety. I very seldom go out at night. But if I have friends coming from out of town, and I ask them, tell them where I live on Marlboro Street, and when they pass by and they see this congregation outside, they don't know which way to go. And it's not fair for us if we are out and coming home, have to go down Richland Avenue to Williamsburg, and then turn back on Marlboro Street, just because of this place. We are asking the City Council tonight not to reopen this club. Please, close it permanently. Because we love our city, and to their apartments right down the street, not only a block, and there are apartments, and there's nothing but seniors. They are afraid. So please consider closing the Marlboro Station, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson, this is not the first time you've been to council with a concern about the, the business, is it not? I thought you came some years ago expressing concern about the Marlboro Station.
When it first started, I think Ms. Clyburn was out of town at that time, and I called you. Because at the time, I did not know there was a club on that street. You did not know anything about it, because you said that you undoubtedly had been out of town, and I think you talked to Mr. Ledoux about it. And at that time, no one was here to represent Marlboro Street to be negative. We did not want it on Marlboro Street. But I can understand it was a business section, so therefore, we couldn't do anything about it. But like, for years, we didn't hear too much. But lately, when there comes to shooting, it's dangerous for us. And on Bonwood Avenue, sometimes when I'm coming home down Williamsburg Street, I see children out there in the summertime playing. And now, parents probably are afraid for their children to even play. We pay our city taxes, and we really, really want protection. And I want to thank you all tonight.
Thank you for coming out.
Anyone else? Yes, yes, sir.
To Mayor and members of City Council, this event is unfortunate for the City of Aiken. It's bad publicity for the City of Aiken and is unsafe for the residents of that area. And I would hope that council would take the leadership in doing what is necessary to make the area safe. We look forward to a safe city, a safe place to live, safe communities. And this is not safe. So we hope that council will take the appropriate leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Do you mind if I give the letter, have the signatures of this right out?
Not at all. Please, please do. Is anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Roselle Robinson, and I live on Williamsburg Street. I was on my way to Sunday school. You know, that was early on a Sunday morning, and as I went down that block, there was fighting in the, there's an area across the street from the building. I really didn't know what the building was, to be honest with you. But to see these people, and they were making, they were just raising, they were raising hell. So I refuse to go down that block now. Because why, why do we have something in our, in our neighborhood who has no respect for the neighbors? And I am asking that you please not allow this place to open again. I thank you.
What time of the morning was that, Ms. Rosa?
Yeah, sorry.
What time of the morning was that?
I was on my way to Sunday school at 8:45.
Ms. Robinson, you may want to say that you were in New York and you returned here and purchased a home.
Yes. I had no idea what was going on there, and I couldn't imagine why, on a Sunday morning, and they were just carrying on. I, I refuse to go through the block. And I live in that area. I should be able to go anyplace in the block of Tuesday, but I won't go there. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes.
Good afternoon. I'm Marilyn Brown, and I've lived on Marlboro Street for about 50 years. When I moved, I rented my, I rent my property, and most people that live and want to rent it is young people, and they have children. But I noticed this time when I, when I, when they moved, it was hard, it's harder to get a good renter. Because people that want to rent a place, they want it to be safe. They don't want to ride up down the street and see all these people ganged up on the other end of the street. And I really think this station should be closed. It's a bad influence on our neighborhood, and I really would ask you to please not issue license to this type of thing on our streets in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Sean Percival. I live in Jackson. I don't live here. But I've worked at the Marlboro Station for 11 years. I've been a bouncer, I've been a bartender, and I'm also a performer there. There, we close at 2 o'clock. We stop serving alcohol at 1:30. Just because you have an ID and it goes through the door, the bartenders check every ID as well. We have little lights that we look at. I go on the internet all the time to see different things. I used to work at a convenience store, so I know how to pick out a fake ID. Excuse me. As far as the fights go, and I've seen plenty of fights in there, it's mostly over another girl dancing on another guy, just random things. Just in the past year is when it's gotten worse. There was another bar called The Ponderosa that wasn't, not even a block away from us. When they got closed down, a lot of their patrons started coming into ours, which brought in bad negativity. I don't see that the bar should be closed down. We're at the other end of the street, past the residential. When people leave the Marlboro Station, they don't go down that way. They go on Richland and go eat. I know, because I know half of them. I've, like I said, I've been there for 11 years, and once we close, we make people leave. They've got to go. They cannot stay around. We go around at night after everybody has left. I know personally, me and Mr. Pitts and a few others that work there, we go outside and we pick up all the trash off of the ground. If there's any trash, it's from people driving by later on in that evening. That's all I have to say.
You know, I, I think that's very worthy, picking up the trash and those kinds of things. But how do you justify this kind of thing?
I think that if you allow Bruce to talk to SLED and get professionals, professionals in there to run it, I do agree, maybe we should shut down a little earlier than 2 o'clock. Like I said, we stopped serving alcohol at 1:30. As bartenders, it's our job to make sure if they are intoxicated, we stop serving them. We don't serve them anymore. We also let the bouncers know that they are cut off, and if they are caught drinking anymore, they are to be removed from the bar, which they have been removed from the bar. I don't condone any of that stuff that's on that piece of paper. I don't. I don't like to see anything like that. Yes, we let 18-year-olds up in there. It is also a gay and lesbian bar. Okay? There are 18-year-olds that are being turned away from, from their families, and they come in this bar to escape that. This is a place for them to escape the real world and just be around friends and enjoy it. That's why I feel like if we get professional bouncers in there and get with SLED, get with Aiken, like the police departments, figure something out, but this is a place to where we can work things out. I can't tell you how many people I've helped from committing suicide because I work there, because I'm a performer. Because their families have turned them away because they were gay or lesbian. As far as Friday nights, Friday nights are considered our lesbian night. That's why there's not any problems there, because people don't want to come out on lesbian night. Whenever I worked there, Saturday nights was our straight night or our college night, as a lot of, as the patrons would call it. That's what they were calling it. I didn't call it any of that, because I don't see gay, straight, black, white. It doesn't matter to me. But I really think if, if we can get to the bottom of it and get the bouncers and get everything that we need to get in there, I think, you know, it should help.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anybody. Back to City Council. Do we? Do we have a motion in the second to revoke the business license at Marlboro Station?
I submerge.
I second it. Any discussion?
I, I would just make a comment with regard to the comments Mr. Pitts made about private security. I worked in that field for 20 years. I'm credentialed in that field. I can't imagine a private security company taking on a contract like that. I certainly never would have. My liability company would have raised all kinds of... He's going to have real trouble getting a private security company to provide that service.
Well, that's what I mentioned, you know, maybe public safety would have more weight.
I can't imagine a chief of police who would ever allow his people to work in that environment. They just wouldn't.
That's just asking for time. Well, how long is the suspension? Does the council have any idea of the motion?
The...
Is it a permanent?
If, if you don't otherwise limit the suspension, the assumption would be that the revocation is permanent. That doesn't stop someone from reapplying for a license in the future. And at that point, the city would have to address each application just like they normally would. I would suspect at that point that the Nathan, whoever's doing Nathan's job at that point would be looking for, you know, proof that this isn't going to happen again and that sort of thing, which would obviously be difficult to do.
Well, I would expect whoever reapplies would have a pretty good, or would have to present some kind of a plan which is credible.
Right.
You know, for us to even consider it again, otherwise, you know, it's...
Would you consider leaving it suspended until such a plan is presented?
No.
Yes.
Just leave it suspended until a full-throated plan for remediation of the problem?
I don't, I don't, well, first opinion.
I don't want to play games with these citizens here. These ladies are out tonight, and they don't normally come out after dark. And I would hate to play games with them, with them wondering and chasing, wondering what's coming next. We should not do them that way. And Philip, I don't know whether there is a quick fix with all of these incidents and these charges. I, I don't, I don't know whether crowd control or private security company, private club membership.
I mean...
I'm a little bit, well, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I call for the question. We, we've discussed this enough.
All right. We've got a motion in the second. Show of hands, please.
Do we have to vote on the call of the question?
That's where we're voting.
There's a motion in the second. We haven't voted on it.
If you call for the question...
I'm sorry. Call for the vote.
If you call for the vote, I'll vote against it, because I don't think that... If you call for the vote, I'll vote against it, because I don't think that council members should be cut off in the midst of a question.
I thought it was completed, I'm sorry.
I, I was simply gonna say, if, if these problems are something recent, if it went on, if, if this business has been there since nineteen ninety-nine and it hasn't been...
It's been a problem.
It has, it has.
I'm going off of this, these thirty incidents in just twenty fourteen alone.
Well, I think, I think what Ms. Price said carries a lot of weight. But I mean, you know, society in general is getting a little bit rougher and more dangerous. It's not necessarily, I'm sure they're not customers at the Marlboro Station, and you say they're out at night and they're not, you know, they feel uncomfortable. I mean, this is a, you know, a societal-type problem. And, you know, you don't walk around New York City at night by yourself. It's a shame that Aiken is in that same category according to that. Let me say, it's in that same category because of one business. And that business impacts the neighborhood. And I think the record has to speak for itself.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any doubt Bruce has tried his best to make this place safe. But when you see these kinds of numbers, and then you go back in years and look at what was there as well, it shouldn't be open at all. It's not safe on that, in that area. And I feel, I feel the same way these citizens feel. It's not safe. Anytime you're getting shooting, and then, and that's not the first time, you know? So I think it should be closed. If they want to come back after two or three years and try it, they can try. That's my feeling on it.
If, if you recall, we had an incident right around the corner from me with a club that had one incident of shooting on Lower Town Road, and we closed that establishment. And it's been quite peaceful since then.
Okay, we got a motion in the second. Show of hands, please. Okay. Pose. Okay, so it passes six to one. Next item. Thank, thank you, citizens, for being here.
Thank you all for coming out.
Item two, first reading of an ordinance to approve repurposing of CPST funds. Mr. Ledoux, please.
At the last meeting, we discussed the repurposing. Council asked that we make some changes. We believe we have addressed those that council had mentioned. And so before you tonight is under CPST two to add a hundred thousand dollars to downtown streetscape. The proposed park on the landfill would be decreased from twenty-five sixty-three thousand to three hundred thousand. And the Northside Regional Recreation would be increased to four million one seventy-nine oh eight eight sixty-nine. Under CPST three, we would combine the two public safety projects into one. We'd move up Hitchcock, University Parkway ahead of Hitchcock Parkway, and also take Hitchcock Parkway and decrease it in funding cycle and with the amount from three point nine million to one point six. So for your consideration tonight is the approval of an ordinance changing the funding and repurposing of projects showing the attached exhibit for CPST two and three. If you approve it, then we will take the second reading at the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we suspend the rules and talk about this a little bit in relation to another item that's down there about some businesses that need some drainage issues. I think we ought to discuss this first, and I would move that we suspend the rules and discuss it.
I'll second.
Second, okay, show of hands, please. Passes unanimous.
If I can address it just a minute, as, as my understanding, and Mr. Smith can correct me, as these projects either come to fruition or there's some reason that we don't do it, the council can repurpose the money. And I think what I've been wanting to do is, is part of this, is to be sure we look forward and not look backward as we have on some of these in the past. We don't need to move all of the money at one time. We can do it over several times. But I think we need to be good stewards of the money and do it either part of it tonight or part of it every six months or something. But we need to take a look at this as we go through it. We're, we're looking at about thirty million dollars here. So we need to be very, I think, very diligent on how we spend the money and where we put it. The proposal on capital two, I think that money is all in the bank. We've pretty well said that the landfill is not gonna be done. So that one is a pretty safe, pretty safe bet. The downtown streetscape, I think there may be some other comments about increasing that money. We do have a reason for it. So I'd like to get, and then when we go to capital three, with the other agenda item that I asked Mr. Ledoux to put on there about some drainage issues on several commercial properties that are for sale, we may need to dedicate some of that money on three, capital three, to that work. So that, I think we could go ahead and look at doing capital two, in my opinion. And we needed to maybe just do capital two tonight and capital three once we go on, or we do both, all of it and take care of between the two readings. So that's what I would think.
Is there root, is there a push to do three?
Let me make a comment or two of that, if you don't mind. Really, no comment on CPST two. But on, on number three, I would like to see University Parkway moved up so that we could then have that security since we have already passed an ordinance allowing us to spend up to four hundred thousand dollars for engineering and to do some of the environmental, the stormwater. And right now, because of where it's in the listing, there probably wouldn't be enough money to complete this project or even to go forward with the project as we now have it proposed. So that's the only thing I'd, I'd mention on CPS three is that council would consider switching University and Hitchcock Parkway in the order that have it. As far as adding new projects, storm drainage, there's really nothing in CPS two or three that I could see, and, and our city attorney could maybe help me on this, that would allow CPST money to be used for those areas unless we looked at the Whiskey Road. It says curb improvements or improvements along Whiskey Road could be maybe considered for doing stormwater work off those areas. So that's the only comment I wanted to make on that.
Well, I, I think we, you know, what you're proposing here is with I'm fine, I'm a little concerned about splitting the Hitchcock Park money right now. The last council meeting, I think it was Mr. Mary and Mr. DeWard, said we ought to just leave it whole right now and judge it as we get to that.
And that's what we did here. This, the money that's in Hitchcock Parkway, that's the, the limit of how much we think we will receive by the end of the period of time, which I guess would be in twenty eighteen. In other words, by moving it down, you're not gonna receive the full amount anyways.
Well, it, we probably ought to state that because six months from now, or a year from now, I, I missed that comment that you, why it was reduced. I took it for another reason.
And that's just, if you look on that page one eighteen, the revenue projection is at thirty-three million three hundred ninety thousand dollars versus the forty-four four sixty that we had originally received. And so that was the last project that's funded, and it has to be within that thirty-three million three ninety.
Okay. I didn't pick that up.
I just have a couple of comments. With regard to CPS two, my, my only question, and I'm not sure that any of us have an answer, is I know that we're not gonna put anything on the landfill, and we, and that money, given that CPS two is done, needs to be realigned. And I'm, I'm not against putting it onto the Northside Regional Recreational Park. But again, keeping in mind with taxpayers' money, I hope we don't want to get carried away with, with the Northside Regional Park beyond what we thought it should be when it was voted on in, in two thousand and four. Only two of you are on the council that can contribute to that discussion. With regard to CPS three, we're running into some problems, I think, with the voters, what the voters told us that they approved. Combining fifteen and nineteen, I, I don't know why, I don't know why that's proposed. They're two separate projects, and it's very likely that nineteen, if we left it alone, would not get, I think it's nineteen, yeah, would not get funded. We're not gonna get eleven million dollars of the, of the forty-four million. That's the current projection, that could change, I suppose. But we're not gonna get eleven million. And if, if you come up and cut off eleven million, you're just about at that project number nineteen. So I'm, I'm really not in favor of cutting that out because it doesn't comport to what, what we told the voters we wanted. I agree that we should move up Hitchcock, uh, move down Hitchcock Parkway. That is clearly not gonna get funded anyway. Decreasing of the Hitchcock Parkway funding, I, I think if you do that and you try to use that money on any higher priority, as I said earlier, you're, you're not following the guidelines that we asked for from the voters. So I, I think we need to leave Hitchcock funding where it is. It's, we're not gonna collect it. And if we do collect it, if we don't collect it and we take money from it already, then we're, we're violating the priority order of the, of the whole project.
And CPS three, we're not taking any of the money from Hitchcock Parkway and reallocating it to any other projects.
Where's it going, then?
It's, there's just not enough money in the thirty-three million three hundred ninety thousand dollars.
So what you're saying is...
I, I know, but if you just leave it where it is, then it's gonna die by itself, because we'll never get down to that level.
Well, we, we feel that we can get, it will get down to that level.
What you're saying is you're reducing three point nine million, which we don't have, to one point six million.
That we're not gonna have.
That we're not gonna have.
Well, no, we, if you add up all these projects here, it adds up to three, three million three hundred ninety thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. And that's with Hitchcock Parkway having that one million six hundred fourteen thousand.
Up through Hitchcock Parkway, you're about twelve, little, maybe close to thirteen million dollars. So we're not gonna get, on our list right now, we're not gonna get funding for projects eighteen down through twenty-five.
You're not gonna get full funding?
Well, we...
Unless our math is wrong, and Glenn Parker's here, he's the one that does the math.
He's the one, huh?
Our projection right now, our overall projection was forty-four point four million. We currently project thirty-three point three.
That's correct.
So that's an eleven million dollar difference. If you start down the bottom with project number twenty-five and go up, you got six million, seven and a half million, eight and a half million. The land purchase for the Northside Park is nine, and then you go to Hitchcock Parkway, you got twelve-nine. Already spent what?
We already spent some money for Hitchcock Parkway.
I got a question on this. Leave the Hitchcock Parkway at one point six, is that so if the county ever decides they're gonna contribute, or the arts is going to contribute, or the CIB is gonna contribute?
That's just what the money, the last little bit of money that was left, when you add up to thirty-three million.
There's no rationale for leaving that money there.
No, no. Last time we split it between water and sewer.
Why, why would it matter what number you leave there if...
It's just a number until we know what the, we finally get in our funds.
It's more about rearranging the order, and you can leave it at three point nine, you can jack the number up to six million, it's gonna be the same amount, and then whatever we get, we get.
Correct.
All I was gonna say is what Mr. DeWard was, when you were doing your math?
Yes.
You're right, it doesn't come up to the eleven million. You've gotta include the already spent to date. When you combine those two, you're at your eleven million.
Already spent to date on what?
Well, look at the spent to date column. It's got a list of everything that has been spent up through the end of... So if you add that to the, the money we're not projecting, that gets you to thirty-three million.
Some of the spent to date was against authorized projects that are already on this list higher up. I mean, the first one we did was public safety computers. That should have been spent. And Eustace Park Senior Youth Center, we haven't spent. We did the equipment of government, Governor Aiken Park. So some of those have already been done.
Correct.
But that's apples and oranges to take what we've already spent, because we've already spent some against a specific item.
All right, but you, you got thirty-three million. That's what Kim is projecting right now, based on the first two or three draws. That's what, that's what we're projecting will be our total revenue.
Let me, let me qualify that. We have thirty-three million consisting of twenty-five projects rated in priority. Would you agree with that? Okay.
Okay. The reason, the reason there's no money on the last four or five projects is based on what we've spent to date, added to what we're asking you to approve, gets you to thirty-three million.
I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, the reason we don't have the money is because the Aiken County Treasurer tells us we're not gonna get that money. I mean, we got it at the bottom, forty-four million versus projection of thirty-three million. So we're not gonna collect eleven million of the forty-four that we thought we were gonna get. So fairness would say, take your lowest project and go up until you come to that eleven million, and leave those projects alone and take care of the rest. I mean, Mr. City Attorney, isn't that the approach that the law requires? I shouldn't use the word require an attorney, but...
I, I believe the math that he has here is correct.
I mean, he's...
Can I just go through this very quickly? Okay, the Hitchcock Parkway went from four million to one point six million. So that's about two point four million dollars that is in this not going to be spent. Then you add on five hundred for the land purchase in Northside, public school sidewalks, that's another million, million and a half. If you add up all these ones from number twenty-one down, that's seven, eight, that's nine million. Seven, eight, eight-five. That's eight point five million, and then you add the other two point four million that we don't have for Hitchcock Parkway, that adds up to ten point nine. If you add ten point nine million to thirty-three three hundred ninety thousand, that comes up approximately right where you're, you need to be.
I don't disagree with anything you just said.
Okay, so what's the question again?
I, I, that's not what, what Glenn was saying. Glenn was taking, trying to take the seven million from the very top of the page and saying that we spent that and, and factoring that in.
No, so the one point six, one four for Hitchcock Parkway, we may get one point six, we may only get a million, we may get two million. You could decide at a later date what you want to do with that Hitchcock Parkway money.
One and a half, eight and a half.
Yeah, if, if our projection, if we run into the happy problem that our projection is too low, and we actually end up with three point five, oh, with thirty, thirty-five million, then by having reduced the Hitchcock Parkway money here, then, then it wouldn't go to Hitchcock Parkway. It would fall to the next category, because we reduced the allocation on Hitchcock Parkway.
And, and tonight, we don't have to reduce, we don't have to do anything to it.
Right. If we leave the allocation at three point nine, then whatever overage that is raised beyond thirty-three million...
Or underage.
pours into, well, underage means it comes down, but overage means it would pour into the Hitchcock Parkway line item until it hits the three point nine million, at which point then money would start pouring over into the land purchase for the Northside Park. But if you leave it fully allocated, then whatever, if there's money raised, revenue generated in excess of the thirty-three million dollar projection, then it would go where it was originally promised to the voters to go, and that's towards that Hitchcock Parkway.
Yeah, I don't see any need to change the Hitchcock Parkway funding at all, and I don't see any need to, to separate project fifteen and nineteen. It's just apples and oranges.
If we could just move University Parkway ahead of Hitchcock Parkway...
That's fine. I have no qualms about that, because we know we're not gonna do Hitchcock Parkway, even if we had all the money.
And we can make that change between first and second reading.
If, so what you're saying on CPS three, the only, the only thing you're gonna bring back to us is move it up ahead of, move University ahead of Hitchcock?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the other three on Northside on CPST two, I, I, I don't have a concern.
Okay.
That's just me.
I will reiterate that we don't want to get down the road, and three years from now, we're going to still wonder when the Northside project is going to move along. And, and most of the money is gone. We keep dipping here, dipping here, dipping here, so...
You've got all that money, there's no reason whatsoever there should be any danger of...
That's on record, I have.
Wait, let's see, there's no dipping here at all. That money is, I've been watching that the whole time, and the money hasn't changed moving from the landfill to the other, still same amount of money.
All right, go ahead.
All right. Go ahead. I have a question. Glenn, do you, I have a question, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind him.
Move quickly.
The 1.5 million, greenways and open space. Thought we started out with a million dollars for greenways and open space. We used some monies for green boundary, and that took us down to 8 something, I thought, nearly $200,000. But now we've got a 1.5 million. Am I confusing?
You've got a million in the CPS T2.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where the money came from out of 2.
Correct.
Well, we spent more than, we spent more than $200,000.
Project number 23 in CPS T3 was a million and a half, but we'll not be able to get to it.
Okay. That's something great.
But we still in CPS T2 have funds of 759, 126 that could be used for a project that would be considered open space.
Okay. If we move forward with...
And I'll watch for that money, too.
Right.
Promotion, Mayor?
Yes.
All right. I would move, I would move we, that we approve the CPS 2 recommendations by the city manager, and I would move that we approve his recommendation regarding project 18 Hitchcock Parkway, I'm sorry, project 20, moving that project up ahead of Hitchcock Parkway.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, show of hands, please. All in favor. Pass is unanimous. Okay. Item 3, resolution to accept class action payout from several online travel companies for unpaid accommodations taxes.
We have before you this resolution to be a part of this class action. This would be a one-time only settlement from a class action lawsuit that we'd receive 18,056.21 cents. We have looked at this. Both our city attorney and our staff attorney and both recommend that we accept this settlement. So for your approval tonight is a resolution to accept a class action payout from several online travel companies for unpaid accommodation taxes.
Okay. Do we have a motion and second for approval?
So moves, Mr. Mayor?
I second.
Okay. Discussion? If not, show of hands, please. Okay. Passes unanimously.
That's going to solve all our...
I guess he doesn't want to take money.
Item 4, funding for infrastructure improvements for the former Teresa TD Bank and Lad Britt. Those are 3. Mr. LeDoux, please.
There are a number of properties, as Councilmember Ebner had stated, along Whiskey Road, but there's other locations in the side of the city that these are just difficult locations, either because of storm drainage, hard to get to with water and sewer, or maybe needs some relief with a frontage road or some other access to a major highway. Probably the classic example is the Lad Britt and the TD Bank, where if those were to come into the city as a restaurant or major development that would generate a lot more traffic than there was there previously, we would more than likely have to have a traffic study. And the traffic study would say it's going to be a right turn in or the right turn out, which restricts that property on Whiskey Road, which then in turn would require some kind of secondary access probably through the back property line. As council knows, we have had a report from the chamber that says that our growth in Aiken has been at zero, and we have looked for ways to add some incentives for businesses to prosper within our community. In a couple of weeks, we hope to have a meeting with council and present some ideas on this. But tonight was kind of, I guess, to me, when I got this note from Mr. Ebner, it was kind of like a discussion starter as to how do we get moving to provide the necessary relief. Teresa's, it's a drainage problem. My understanding was a fast food restaurant wanted to go in there a few years ago and got turned down because they could not meet the drainage requirements. Also, in that area, there is already some flooding. The Lad Britt, the TD Bank, same thing. There's no storm drainage, there's no sewer, and there's no secondary access. I think Mr. Ebner has a couple of other examples, but I think you understand the gist of where we're going. We could look at numerous other properties. It's how do we move forward from here?
Yeah. And I think Mr. LeDoux and I toured these, and I've been working with them at least for the last two years and listening to some of the stories and talking to the commercial realtors. And I think these are, these are examples that you can pretty well drive by and see. Teresa's closed a little over three years ago. There's been a stormwater issue since the early 80s there when the stormwater was put in for the Veteran Building and a couple of other buildings there. Somebody's slide rule slipped, I'll put it a nice way. And what's it need, about $30, $40,000 to fix the problem?
Yeah.
And the city, when they, and it was a, two businesses to come in there, very well-known national or international businesses, and they walked away because we wanted to put an underground bunker in for somewhere between 100 and 150,000. And I think this is the kind of thing that we need to, have an advocate or some way for these developers, or if you will, realtors can come and say, hey, this just doesn't sound right. And I picked it up dealing with the Whiskey Road water. But for instance, with Teresa's, there's an outstanding contract on that property now.
Yes.
And Mr. LeDoux has talked with them, and I have too. And I think that we have a, we helped out a little bit there with the water drainage. And technically speaking, there shouldn't be a drainage problem, but the city was involved in that back in the early 80s that the pipe wasn't large enough. So that's a specific example. And I think tonight, just discuss these, going to give you some more. When you go down, and that's two businesses there. Two of them have walked away. One of them is Cookout, and the other one, I forgot the name of it, but actually four businesses have walked away. Two the first time, and two are working on it now. So we may have a chance to get two businesses there. The one at TD Bank and Lad Britt, it has a little bit of help it needs from the city because the water and sewer lines were supposed to be put under Oak Lane, and they didn't get done. So that's a, that's a city problem without a doubt. And if you start looking at that, the right in, right out for that property is probably the right thing to do. The businesses that were there were low usage. And that's besides, and Whiskey and Pine Log, that's probably the next worst fender bender place we have along there. That needs a little more help. There's a road, is it Ginder or Ginger, the little private road back there, that goes behind them, oh, do you remember the name of it, Roger?
It goes to a trailer park right now.
Yes. It has a name on it.
But it's right behind Tire Kingdom.
Yeah. And there is, there is a road, and there's some piece of detention ponds and stuff. I don't think without any type of development help from the city, and when I say develop, I'm looking at the water usage, not to go build a building, that property will probably sit there a while. It's obviously very prime real estate. Just recently, within the last couple of months, Ryan sold, and that was in the newspapers, Panera Bread, and two others or three other businesses. So there are people looking at the city, but as we go from county land to something, Lad Britt's been there since the 80s. It was a dairy farm and that. Times have changed. And somewhere or another, we need to look at working on these. And this is just examples. The other one's a bowling alley, and there's a sign there. And I won't quote any names, but we're not supposed to, you know, if it came in the city, the sign would have to disappear. So I did, made a few phone calls and talked to some people. That sign is very valuable. It's worth a million to a million and a half dollars, okay, just because of the location. So I asked somebody, what if we move it over there and leave it in the county with a plot of ground 10 foot square, you know, and then bring the rest of it into the city? You know, we may have to use some innovation, things like that. And I had Big Ron Wade give me, get a price, and he said he could move it for 14,000 to 16,000. And it would be his company doing it because he maintains them and all. I use these as examples that, you know, maybe the city needs to look at an advocate, and Mr. Mary has supported that. But as these old businesses disappear, and we bring them into the modern age, most of the stuff we're going to get here is, you know, is kind of the cookie cutter stuff. We might bend the rules on those colors a little bit, but they come in and I need this many square feet, this is what I need. And if you don't provide it, they're going right down Highway 1 here a little ways. So I guess I'm putting this for some thinking. How do we get from here to there? Teresa's is pretty easy to fix. Lad Britt's probably, what, 120, 150,000. Lad Britt and TD, and then moving the sign at the bowling alley, say 20 grand. So that's the kind of money that I think is pretty well a good number to use for those three pieces of property.
How much for Teresa's, did you say?
Uh, Teresa's, the number I got was enlarging the line size, and then when Roger looked at it, there's already a line underneath Ryan's, which you have to cross the gas right away. And so if we could cross that gas right away at the right elevation, it's probably even way less than that.
I'm not sure they'll let you do that, though.
Huh?
I'm not sure they'll let you do that. It'd be great if they would, but I'm not sure they'll, because I've asked for...
You never know. It depends on the elevation and the clearance on that. But anyway, Teresa's is probably the easiest one to fix. And I've actually communicated with the developer out of Charlotte on that. You know, don't run away without coming and talking to us.
Are you confident that can be fixed?
Oh, yes. And Roger...
I've heard too, like, I felt for several years that people have backed away and, you know, didn't know what...
Not only that, it's a tear down build, new. So I mean, you get a new piece of property, and the other parts have been renovated within the last three or four years. So I'm, I guess I'm making an appeal to all of us that we need to start looking at the older businesses, if you will, disappear for one reason or another. You know, we've had the mattress firm come in, we've had Cracker Barrel, and here's a little strip of land in there. It's going to be a tough one to do. So I would like us to think about it. Then at the next meeting, I would think we need to go ahead and get the city staff to say, what can we do at Teresa's, and how much would it cost? And then bring it to council, and let's actually bite our teeth on one of them and see what we can do.
Is there someplace in our system where our requirement for drainage is twice what it is elsewhere?
Our detention ponds are about 1.4 times larger than the county and the state requires.
Is the discharge rate requirement that we have, it's got to discharge at a lower rate than what, in other words...
Does that adversely impact businesses coming in?
Well, it...
Doesn't on Teresa's, it does.
Well, I don't know about Teresa's, but it either makes them have to buy more land, which drives up the cost of them doing business, or it makes them have to, or in conjunction with that, it makes them spend more money on the pond itself because it has to be bigger.
Is that something we should change so we're, we're not disadvantaged and...
I think there's parts of the city where actually it's probably appropriate. But then there's definitely two-thirds of more of the city where we probably, where I think we should change it. And we had that from our Horizons meeting in 2014 as one of our goals to look at, in conjunction with Tilden Hillbrand, to look at maybe making that revision. There's still, in the Georges Pond area and all that stuff, where maybe having the more restrictive discharge requirements might be necessary. But when you get to the Northside or when you get to, you know, other parts of town, if we would go back to sort of the state standard, I don't know if you can call it a standard, but what most of the state uses, it would reduce that burden on business and development.
Reggie has identified several properties. I think right now what's pressing is Teresa's. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. I think that's one. It's very straightforward. It has a straightforward engineering solution and has potentially two ways to do it. One of them is more economical, but we do have to cross under the gas line. And the other one is enlarge the pipe that's there. And Tilden Hillbrand worked with the developer that's looking at it now, and his calculations, and he sent me the sheet on it. And the pipe needs to be increased in size. And it goes to the pond, what we call the pond. He needs to pond. And part of the problem, the line is so flat, the line is so flat because of the terrain, it just needs to be larger to let more flow through it, and that would solve the problem.
As an added comment to that, what I just said, taking care of what you just mentioned with Teresa's, but somehow we convened a work session to discuss these other properties and strategies in terms of what it takes to remedy these problems associated with these businesses just sitting idle.
Yeah. These, I just picked on these because they're...
Right. But there are others, I'm sure.
There's others on Pine Log, and it gets into more of the industrial, say, use industrial commercial developments. If you wanted to build houses there, it's not that much of a problem. You don't have the turn in, turn out. But Whiskey and Richland are two of the roads that we need to look at and encourage business to build there and be in the city. And of course, the properties I'm talking about are county properties. They're not in the city.
But the key here is that we're going to have to invest something.
We've got to invest something to do that. And so I would, if that's agreeable, is if we just can get staff to take a look at that, the two options, and come back to us in a couple of weeks.
It becomes, it's a little bit more difficult. From an engineering standpoint, if we had the right away or the easements on the storm drainage pipe behind the Veterans Building, that's one thing. But the person who owns that building, we asked if we could do what you had stated, and they told us they would not give us the easements. So we could look at it and tell you, in a perfect world, we get the easements, this is what it'll cost. But the main thing, and we're, I believe it's going to be on the 19th, we'll have a combination work session. Sarah, did you hand out that little, my email that I sent out this afternoon to everybody?
Somehow, a whole stack of them ended up on my desk.
Well, now we know where the emails at.
I didn't know if they were all for me or what.
Veteran, the, but, you know, we'd like to go ahead and talk about businesses and investment and the incentives on that date, because, again, these are just examples, and each one is going to be on a case-by-case basis. Some are going to be storm drainage, some are going to be sewer, some are going to be water, some might be roads. I think the classic one that Reggie now likes to talk about is the, as he calls it, the sign. I'll call it what it is, a billboard at the bowling alley, is right in the middle of the bowling alley parking lot. And each one would, could be moved or taken care of. It's just a matter of finding the funding. We could come up with a couple of costs and what it may cost us at Teresa's. But again, until we get into the, this is, this is where council needs to have for any of these major developments, an engineering agreement. So that when you sit down with a developer like Cracker Barrel, was probably the last one I worked on when I was city manager. It was a multi-page agreement on what the city would do, what they would do, and how we'd get the deal done.
Well, since you've talked to the landowners, I went and twisted the arm a little bit, and the harsh treading was putting in a new fence between the buildings. I said, come on, guys, give me a break. And, but I got it down to a fence versus no easement at all. And technically, there should have been one because it's a, it drains several properties there. So, but I think we, we as a city need to take some initiative there. I think there's a couple of very competent firms in town. And I know that Haas and Hillbrand have done the calculations for that for a developer, and they've paid for that, paid for that. It's a stamped piece of drawing, so we do start with something on Teresa's. Now, TD has nothing done on it. But I suggest we use that one as an example and see what we can do. So thank you.
These meetings on the 17th and the 20th would be at 4 o'clock?
The 17th or 19th. Some of the work session, well, the work session is for everybody in council. That would probably start around 5 o'clock.
Five.
And the other ones would probably, one would start at 3, one would start at 4, then...
I'm missing something.
The 19th is better for me, but...
And I heard from one council member who said the 19th is better for them.
I couldn't do the 19th. I'll be babysitting.
If you could get back to me, everybody, then we'll try to pick the best date for everybody to...
But it's one date, either the 17th or the 19th?
We could do it on multiple dates.
Okay.
If we can't get the right people at the table.
Okay. Well, either day is fine with me.
Okay. I think we need a motion and a second.
No, not this one here. That was just... That was just kind of a discussion.
Okay.
Discussion item.
All right.
Still looking for money, but it was a discussion item.
I just want to say thanks to Mr. Edman for bringing up all that stuff. That's all very important and vital stuff for us to really be thinking, forward-thinking on, and I think he's on the right track.
Absolutely.
Lack of necessary.
No, no.
Okay, are petitions in request?
No. I have no objection.
Requests to award contract to Johnson.
Lassover.
Thank you. And associate, and for the alley project, alley renovation project.
Yeah, we received several requests for proposals on this, and we had this reviewed a while back. We had a committee of staff, and Avery Spears with the Downtown Development Association was there. After reviewing the various firms, we are recommending that the firm of Johnson, Lassover and Associates, it's a multidisciplined firm out of Augusta, made the best presentation, had what we felt was the best price on this, to redo the undergrounding of the alley, which is the primary cost and work that would be involved. When we describe that, that's the storm drainage, the water, the sewer, and then the electrical utilities that would go in there. We'd be digging up the alley, we'd be putting conduit down, and then S, E, and G would be putting the wiring and doing the conversion of the work within the alley itself. We'd bring this back up to its approximately, this current level that the alley is at right now, and then have to make a decision on what type of a surface we'd put in there, what type of lighting, what kind of landscaping, do we want arbors at the other ends, do we want to have bowlers that go up and down like you see in Washington DC to block traffic, or some other way that we could go ahead and block traffic in the alley when we want to have events? But that's what this project is all about. The primary, though, is to do the undergrounding, and that's going to be the major part of the expense and the engineering that's going to be involved in this project. If council approves this tonight, they'll have the engineering done sometime mid to late spring. It would then come back to council again, once we have a much firmer estimate on this work for plans that would probably, we'd be able to get started on the work in late summer, if all goes well. So the first step, though, is to hire this firm, and so for your consideration night, we are requesting that you award the contract to Johnson, Lassover and Associates for forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, discussion? If not, show of hands, please. Passes unanimously. Item two, approval to unfreeze employee positions.
We have a few positions here, as we pretty typically have. The one thing that I did want to bring to council's attention is we had, last summer, Ed Evans retired. In the fall, we had Sandra Korblech that retired. She came back for a few months to help us out. She is no longer going to be able to come back. And then Susan French retires tomorrow, this week? Sue?
March twentieth.
March twentieth, thank you.
Is it right? Oh, if I read my memos, I would know.
Well, we also received information that Carla Delaney, our last planner, has accepted a position in Augusta, which is a nice promotion for her. So we're going to be down to one person, that's Tommy Paradise. We are.
He can handle it.
And that's what I told him, too.
Tell him to put a bed and a house for him.
And as much as we squeeze that department, this is squeezing it probably a little bit more than they need to be squeezed. Susan French is willing to come back and to help out for a while. We have put out feelers to several different organizations, and we believe we have an individual who left the county planning department a while back that is willing to come back partially or part time for us. But we need to go ahead and get that vacancy filled as soon as possible, and so we are asking that council allow us to fill two of the three positions that we have available as planners as soon as possible.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay, discussion.
Just a question, given that we're going to hopefully be hiring a city manager who probably ought to be involved in that hiring, could we survive if you just hired one of the planners instead of both?
Well, by the time we advertise, we get people in, let's hope the new city manager will be here. We are prepared next week, or the following week, or whenever we think it's appropriate, we have the advertisement put together for the planning director and for the PRT director, and those two would be hired once you have the new city manager. This is for the staff below the.
I understand, yeah. And you were talking about some doing reorganization within that. You going to bring that to us during the budget?
That's part of our discussion that we'd have on the nineteenth or whatever date we decide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, show of hands, please, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Item three, request to send a letter signed by city council to the Aiken County Legislative Delegation for reimbursement costs associated with winter storm packs.
I have a stack of those, too, over here.
And.
I don't know why I wear anything on my desk.
You're hoarding those.
Come on, Phillip. I don't know what, why y'all did that.
Have you got anything else over there?
Next, we'll start with Reggie, and we'll get them past this one.
I've got a motion during executive session also.
That's where, we were wondering where that was at.
Somebody left it all over here.
Did you pass those down while you're at it? We've already sent one letter to the delegation, but at a delegation meeting just recently, they have asked that another submit will be made, so we have put together this letter for you, and if council approves, we'd like to have everybody's signature tonight so that we could go ahead and get this sent immediately to the delegation.
Yeah, okay. Sarah.
So we need someone.
Also move. Second.
Thank you.
Okay, and again, I want to thank the city manager for doing that. Phillip and I went to the county delegation meeting. They were, the members of delegation were as frustrated as the county and as frustrated as we are. Apparently, the governor didn't put this in per budget, but now apparently supports it, so whether it's too late or not, because it's already gone through the House and the budget process is on the way to the Senate, so I hope it arrives there in time.
Okay, well, show of hands, and to approve this. Passes unanimously. Okay.
Then we wanted to talk about the senior youth location. If you'd like, I could go ahead and send out an email and try to find out when is an appropriate date for folks to go out there. There's not a lot of flexibility. We have talked to school district at least two or three times in the last couple of months, try to get them to make a decision, and at this point in time, even offering them some land, even telling them that council might even consider helping them with the move, they're struggling to make a decision to move. So we are going to be needing to locate, I would say it's probably ninety percent, somewhere on the current Ustis Park property. So we might be able to move it a hundred feet or two hundred feet left or right, but again, right now, it doesn't look like the school district property will be in play. But we still need to go out.
We've got a school board member here tonight. Does he have any influence?
We've talked to him about that.
He's one of nine, like you're one of seven.
It comes down to dollars for them. It's not a budget item for them to build this new facility at this point in time. But we, we still, it'd be good for us to go out there and look at it. They did say that we could use their parking lot, they did say that we could probably take the vegetation, I won't even, that's the best I could call it, between the road and their property, and remove some of that for more additional parking. But if you want to do this on a Saturday, if you want to do it on the evening, during the day, we're, staff is always available to come out there and look at it with you. And some of you may not, may not be that interested to go out there and look at the property as to where we locate it.
Well, the big concern I have is, we're talking, if we end up with a four-hundred person facility, we have some issues with parking, and I think that's important. It'd be, quite frankly, very upsetting to have a beautiful building, the people go there and they can't find a place to park.
Absolutely, okay.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, are we going to settle this thing on the senior?
Well, no, we're not, we've settled. This is the third try doing this building, and I'm watching the money, Miss Leslie. Glenn and I started three, three or four years ago, and we had one in between and now. We do have prospectuses in, they've all said they want, would like approval by the twenty-seventh, and then the work can start the end of the year. The first thing they need is where's the building going to be, then the second thing, and I think, talking with Glenn today, we need a topo and, we need a topo which we can get, and I think we have contracts to do that. And then we have to locate the building to get soil samples.
Correct.
And then the thing moves, then it moves, if you will, from the engineering, not from, they do their work, and then the citizens get involved if this is going on. So I think we ought to, we ought to keep this in our sights and not let it die again.
There are some challenges depending on where we decide to locate it. So that's, that's the only thing. And as you said, Roger, if some folks want to and don't want to, that's acceptable. We just know that the offer is extended, and the folks that show up will decide on the location and move forward.
Is there a time certain that we're going to do this?
That's why I brought it up in terms of.
We should hopefully make a decision on the architect for this site within the next week.
Right.
And I'm hoping that we could bring this to council on the twenty-third, for you to vote on.
We are ready to do that.
Yeah, well, no, we, I think it ought to be the other way. We aren't hoping we won it here.
Well, that's, that's the goal, unless we, our negotiation breaks down with whoever we work with. Whether we go ahead and meet on the site to locate where this is going before or afterwards, it really doesn't matter. The architect, by the time we go ahead and, you vote on it, we draw up a contract agreement with them, it goes through all the things that you have to do with contracts, they're not going to start any work for another thirty to sixty days, so. But we need to go ahead and say, this is where the site's going to be for it. And again, we could move tennis courts, basketball courts, we could do a lot of different things in Ustis Park to fit it within there. We just need to find the right spot.
And we talked about moving tennis courts today, but if we do that, then we want to make sure that there is a replacement for the tennis court.
Correct, correct. I will get back to everybody, I'll send an email out and let you know of a couple of possible dates.
My understanding is it will be on the agenda for the.
That is, that is the goal.
Fourth Monday.
Right, Mr. Parker? Got the head, we got four choices, we ought to be able to get one of them to accept the contract. Thank you.
Okay, council, we need to go in the executive session, but let me, let me.
Councilmember one.
I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions. Issues and answers talks about Gene Eisen continuing at no cost to us, doing his thing in Hitchcock Woods and tracking the flow. Is he going to give us an interim report?
George, George has been talking to him.
His report is due to come out, I believe, in May.
Okay, and second.
And what, let me just follow up a little bit on that. On some of these locations, his data was not as good as he had hoped because of trash and some other things getting into the pipes, and because of the size of the pipes, and so that's why he wants, even though he's going to give us this interim report, he wants to continue this on for another year. He said he won't charge any costs, he'll use some of the staff's time to go ahead and do some of the monitoring of the equipment, our staff time, but he will not charge any time with his staff or himself.
I understand that.
Okay.
The other thing is that, are we going to get a copy of the ULI report, is that Urban Land Institute that came in?
Yeah, we, and the reason you haven't gotten anything yet is the first report they gave us, we had some issues with it.
Okay.
Because we had asked some questions at that meeting, and we didn't feel like they were adequately responded to.
Okay.
So they did another report, we still didn't think they responded adequately, and so we just got a report in last week.
Okay, and you're going to get it to us when you.
The third iteration, but it's, I mean, I can give you the report that I got right now.
Well, when you're ready, just let us know what's going on, because it's a very important issue. The last comment is, when we applied for a grant that I thought was like for three-hundred thousand dollars to demolish a few houses in Crosland Park, we came back and got a heck of a lot more than we had, I thought, asked for, and you sent me a copy of the grant, because I wanted to know what was going on, because it was so much money, what are we going to do in Tool Hill and so forth? And what I got on the email was a multi-page thing. Can you, can you give us a synopsis of that grant?
When Harvey Ramsure came here, we had the eight homes that we were looking at, and each one was at thirty-five thousand dollars maximum grant. That's two forty and forty, that's, two hundred and eighty thousand was our portion.
Yes.
Then they got together, the Second Baptist Development Corporation works a lot with Nehemiah Corporation out of Greenville. Nehemiah Corporation identified several properties that they had been looking at for a number of years. They don't own them, they're still in private ownership, so we included all those within the grant process.
Oh, okay.
As it turns out, the information we first got from the state that I reported to you saying we had over five hundred thousand dollars, it's really, we had, they made a mistake, a clerical mistake, and we only got about three hundred and fifty thousand. We got all eight of ours, and then Nehemiah got a couple more.
Okay.
So that's where the disconnect came in.
All right, thank you.
Don't forget, we have some other properties that are OBO, which means our best offer, and it'd be a cheap price on them.
Well, these have houses, we'll get the houses removed.
But these are cleared off.
And sell the property.
At a better price.
Okay, any, any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any else? Okay, let me read this. We need to go in the executive session pursuant to section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight for three purposes. Number one, to discuss negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements and propose sale or purchase of property. Number two, receipt of legal advice relating to the possible settlement of a pending lawsuit. And number three, discussion of negotiations incident to a proposed contractual arrangement regarding the employment, compensation, or promotion of an employee. Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, show of hands, please. Passes unanimously to go into session. Okay. We discussed three issues and did no voting.
Do we have a motion? Oh, yeah.
And a second?
Some move.
Coming out of executive.
Second, second.
Second. Do we have a show of hands, please? Passes unanimously. We are adjourned.